All right. I believe it is six o'clock. We'll call to order in accordance with South Carolina Code of Laws 1985, Section 30-4-80-E. The following have been notified of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting. The Herald, the Charlotte Observer, CN2, NWRHI. If I could ask everyone to please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You have all received a copy of the agenda. Were there any adjustments or corrections?
No, ma'am.
All right. That will stand with unanimous consent. So our very first item is public participation. I see one card, just one.
One.
Okay. Then Amanda Heilinger, if that's right.
We're so close. Heilinger.
Heilinger, come on up. If you'll state your name and address, you can address the board for up to five minutes.
Hi, my name is Amanda Heiliger. I live at 1151 Gower Street, Fort Mill, South Carolina. Good evening, members of the Fort Hill, Fort Mill School Board, parents and community members. My name's Amanda Heiliger, and I hold a bachelor's of science in clinical laboratory science and a master's in molecular diagnostic science from the University of North Carolina. And I'm not only a clinical scientist with over 15 years of experience, but also a mother to a very bright and sweet seven-year-old. I'm here tonight as a parent who is being forced to make an impossible decision, either send my child to a school next to a facility that handles hazardous chemicals, or uproot my family from the home and community that we love. And I'm not alone. Many parents in this district are being placed in the same horrific situation. Let's be clear about what we're discussing. The Sylfab facility will be storing and using chemicals such as anhydrous ammonia, hydrochloric acid, hydrofluoric acid, and saline, substances that are well-documented toxic and explosive risks. Sylene, for example, is pyrophoric, meaning it ignites on contact with air. If there is even the slightest leak or accident, the children at Flint Hill Elementary are the first ones in the blast zone, the first ones to breathe in toxic fumes, and the first ones to suffer, my son. And yet, here we are as parents, being told to either accept the risk or disrupt our lives. How is that fair and ethical? No parent should have to choose between their child's education and their child's safety. No family should have to sell their home, take the financial loss, and move away from a community that we love, just to avoid a preventable environmental hazard. And what makes this even more frustrating is that there are EPA guidelines for schools citing that explicitly recommend a technical risk assessment when industrial facilities are located within 0.25 miles of a school. However, these guidelines were not enforced before Flint Elementary, Flint Hill Elementary, was built, and now, instead of proactively protecting children, we're being told to just hope for the best, and I don't think that's an acceptable response. So tonight, I'm here to request three actions. First, the district must immediately commission an independent third-party environmental assessment to fully evaluate the health and safety risks posed by Sylfab. Stop waiting on a recommendation of who to use for this and find one to begin as soon as possible. The clock's ticking, and it's the bare minimum when child's lives are at stake. Second, if the assessment confirms risks to student safety, the district must immediately halt the filing or the filling of Flint Hill Elementary and the construction of Flint Hill Middle until Sylfab are relocated to an appropriate industrial zone. It's immoral to knowingly place children in danger. And third, the district needs to join parents and community members in our fight to move Sylfab to a properly zoned location, one that does not put children and families at risk. The burden of correcting this mistake should not fall solely on the parents. The school board must be active advocates in ensuring the industrial facilities are placed where they belong, away from our schools and the neighborhoods. I understand that industry and economic development are important. However, they are not more important than our children's safety. The Fort Mill School Board has an obligation, a legal, ethical, and moral obligation, to ensure that students are placed in a safe learning environment. And as a scientist, I can tell you that the risks posed by these chemicals are real, and as a mother, I can tell you that no child should be placed in harm's way just to go to school. As a community member, I can tell you that it is not a burden that should fall on the parents alone, and as a human, it should be common sense not to build a heavy manufacturing plant this close to an elementary school. But here we are. This is not just a school board decision, it's a public, public safety decision, and the time's tacked now, before the first child steps foot into Flint Hill Elementary School next year, my son. And as a personal challenge to all of you, please look us in the eyes, listen to us speak, hear the expert advice, and remember, there are always cameras rolling at the York County Council meetings. We see you when you roll your eyes while we voice our concerns about our child's well-being. Thank you.
Thank you. We've got several reports and information, starting with the strategic planning update. Dr. Waksness?
Good evening. Tonight, we are going to give an update on the strategic plan. We are in year four of five of this cycle, and after hearing the update this evening, we'll ask for hopeful approval at the next board meeting, once you've had a chance to look at everything. So to get us started, we're going to have Matt come up and get the presentation rolling.
Thank you, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to provide you an update for our strategic plan, and you can see that this is year four of our five-year cycle. So right now, we're currently living the plan, working to improve and meet our performance goals every day. Again, this year, we are just sharing the plan with you all, as we have updated the documents in your board packets with some current data, and really just talking about the direction where we want to head from here in relation to the, the plan and our goals. All right, so again, this is year four of five, so we are coming to an end of our cycle. So Mike, at the end of, or Dr. Waksness, at the end of our presentation here, will give you an update about next steps and kind of where we're heading as we look towards creating our new plan, improving upon this one, and also combining that with our Cognia accreditation that's going to be happening at the same time. So we're kind of looking forward to that as well, and kind of getting the ball rolling on what those next steps will be. But as you can see here, this plan that we currently are working on, working from, started in 2019, and it has included feedback from really countless stakeholders, students, teachers, administrators, parents, community members, you all have had input into the plan, and many more people have been a part of this process. So this is just kind of taking you through the who, what, why, and how of the plan. So the who in this process is really, it's really all of those stakeholders that I just mentioned, both internal and external, that have given us input over the last few years and really have improved the plan over the, the course of the five-year cycle that we have going on right now. The what, I guess in this situation would be that it is, the strategic plan really truly is a five-year roadmap for us, as we look at ways to continuously improve really all facets, facets of our system, not just, you know, the teaching and learning, but budgeting concerns, finance concerns, maintenance, safety, all of those things are included with the strategic planning process. So we're really looking forward to continuing that five-year roadmap throughout the rest of this cycle, and then moving into the next one as well. The why of the process is to continuously improve, but it is also a state mandate that we have to have a strategic plan, but really, it's a strategic, a state mandate that we can live with, because it truly is a reflective process for our schools and the district as we look at updating the data and kind of reflecting on where we've been from year to year, and then really trying to dig into that data and update the plans, so that's really not just a checkbox, but a meaningful activity for all of our, our district leaders and school leaders. And then the how, and that's what Renee is going to get into in just a little bit here. We really want to dig into the data to create a needs assessment for us, and that really does uncover our current reality each year, and allows us to update our goals, our strategies, our action steps, which you can see on the plan, and we really just want to make it more actionable each year of this process. So without further ado, here's Renee to talk about the needs assessment and some other facets of the plan.
Okay, so when we first started our plan, we needed to figure out how we were going to pick what our goals were going to be and what our action steps were going to be, and we looked at several data sources, and that process is called our needs assessment. And as you can see up on the slide, we looked at information from Cognia, the standards review, and the reports they provided. We also have achievement data, college and career readiness data, climate survey data, lots of data, attendance data, teacher retention data, and of course, feedback from our focus groups. So we take all of that information in order to identify what performance goals we should have. And then the actual plan has several components. The district strategic plan and all of our school improvement plans follow the same template, and each school has an executive summary, the district has an executive summary, and then the template, so if you actually look at the plan, I think you all have a copy of it, the very top is the goal area, and this is a requirement from the state that we have these four goal areas. Right below there, you see the strategy, and then below there, we have the performance goal, and this is where we hope to be by the end of the five-year plan for that particular area. And then we have, at the bottom, the annual update that we make each year, and then the final column, of course, is where we want to be at the end of the five years. So we have that for each performance goal, and then if you flip to the third page, this template is for the strategy. So it's the strategy and the action steps, and the action steps are the actions, of course, that we want to follow in order to accomplish our performance goals. And that includes the actual step, dates, the people responsible, any funding that might be required, and then each year, we look at that monitored column to decide where we're at with that action step. Are we going to continue it? Has it been completed? Or is it something that, in the midst of the five years, it needs to be terminated because it's no longer relevant? And then the final column, the evaluation column, are what evidence do we have to show that this action has happened? And moving on, we have Dr. Waksness with the goal areas.
All right, so I'm going to give an overview of each of the goal areas and strategies. So Goal One focuses on leadership capacity. One of the big areas that we focus on within this goal is using data to inform instructional decisions. There's so much data and education, but we want to make sure we're using it effectively and making it actionable for our schools and our teachers. So you'll see some of the action steps are geared towards that. 1.2 is effective communication. We all know how critical effective communication is within our internal stakeholders and also our external stakeholders, so you'll see some of the goals in that area for 1.2. 1.3 and 1.4 are on the screen now, and 1.3 is more and more important every single day. We know we have a teacher shortage across the country, and this is critically important that we have a highly effective teacher in every single classroom, so that's something, of course, we put a lot of attention towards. One thing to note that I wanted to call out from that strategy area is that our teacher turnover rate decreased from 16.4% in 2022 to 10.3% in 2024. So we would like to see that number lower, of course, but I think that would probably be one of the best rates in the state, in the country maybe even, and we were happy to see the trend going down. Strategy 1.4 focuses on leadership development. This includes things like our Leadership Academy for the leaders already within our school system, and different professional learning opportunities for a wide variety of stakeholders, and we want to make sure that we are spending some time and attention on growing our leaders within our system. So Goal Area Two is all about teaching and learning, so of course, this is my favorite goal area of the strategic plan, but it is about what we do as a school district, teaching and learning. So as no surprise to anyone, you've heard me talk a lot about PLCs, and that is a main feature of this section, and we know that the power of collaboration is something that we want to get better and better at. This will, it has been, and will be, our instructional focus area. We really feel it helps all teachers in all subject areas, and I shouldn't say we really feel that way, because we do feel that way, but there's plenty of data that shows that is one of the most impactful strategies. Teacher collaboration, collective teacher efficacy, teachers working together with the mind, we can improve the outcomes for our students. There's also some grading ideas within this area, our grading practices, and the work we've done on making sure that our grades are an accurate reflection of student learning, and also creating some guardrails from school to school to make sure that our schools are doing not exactly the same, but when it comes to grading, it should be very similar, where one teacher is not doing two hours of homework, and the teacher across the hall is doing no homework, and the other teacher is doing an hour and counting it double, or whatever the scenario may be. So just trying to put some guardrails in place for our teachers. As a district, and you all know this, that we saw gains in almost every academic area, and we lead the state in just about every single academic area as well, and our, our scores that can be compared across the state lines, like the SAT, ACT, AP scores are always above the state, I mean, above the national average. So we're excited with some of our results academically. 2.2 is still in the teaching and learning area, and 2.2 really deals with professional learning. We know our teachers are asked to do so much, day in and day out, so what are we doing as a district to provide our teachers with the training they need to be effective and making sure we are offering them the best growth opportunities? 2.3 is talking about how we help students when they need extra help. Of course, that's a very big oversimplification of that, but making sure that we have systems in place to catch students that need extra help, and then thinking about in advance, what are we going to do with those students that need the extra help, rather than being reactive, trying to be proactive with that. So you may have heard CI3T, that talked about a lot. This is exactly where that fits, and making sure our students are given what they need to be successful in class. I'd also say our curriculum coordinators are very important in this area, helping our teachers develop pacing guides, develop intervention plans, developing essential standards. They play a huge role in helping our teachers in those areas. Goal Area Three is resource capacity. Resource capacity for Goal Area Three talks about creating a safe, clean, and inviting schools for all of our students. We talk about the importance of having a physically safe and an emotionally safe environment for our students, and we know in order for students to learn and to feel comfortable in school, we have to have these things in place. 3.3 is technology resources, and this goal area helps us focus on making sure we are prepared for current technology needs, as well as future trends in technology, and making sure that we are prepared for what our students need next. 3.4 is our resources, and making sure we are using data to drive our financial and facility planning. A great example of this is our comprehensive 10-year facility plan. I know I'm going through this very quick, so we'll have time for questions at the end. Goal Area Four is centered on personalized learning, and this goes back to the, not really CI3T, but kind of the same thought process, is giving students what they need individually. We want to make sure we personalize our education as much as possible, which is really hard to do when we have 18,000 students, but it definitely is a goal, and we're getting better and better at that. This is also a big push statewide. There is actually a whole division within the State Department for personalized learning, and we're starting to get more connected with that division within the State Department to allow them to help us and develop plans for our personalized learning. So as you can see in that very fast overview, there are so many factors in creating and running a successful district such as ours. Our strategic plan encompasses a wide range of what we do, and it really focuses on all departments. This is because every single department is a, is an essential piece to student success, whether it's the academic piece, whether it's about the facility piece, the financial planning, the student services, special services. It really does take an entire system to provide, to provide our students with the best opportunity. So I'm going to skip this slide about questions and come back to it, because I wanted to talk about next steps Matt alluded to. So we are coming to the end of our five-year cycle. Our strategic plan and Cognia accreditation, they are on the same five-year cycle. So next school year, we will update the current plan for the final time, and we will start kind of planning behind the scenes for our new strategic plan and Cognia accreditation visit, and then in the 26, 27 school year, we will actually have our Cognia visit, hopefully in the fall of that year, but that's to be determined, and our new strategic plan will be submitted to the state in April of 2027. So those are a few of the big next steps we have coming up, and I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
I have questions.
All right.
Thank you for the presentation. So I got a multitude of questions. So if someone could, if it's you or if it's another stakeholder, you mentioned teacher turnover decrease. Can you kind of delve into that on the mitigation, on, on how we believe?
Certainly.
That's taking place, please?
Certainly, and then Liza jump in if I'm, if I get something incorrect. I know we have several programs in place. We have partnered with Winthrop, other institutions of higher learning, to create pathways for our teachers to earn additional degrees or certifications, so that gives teachers something to look forward to and not have to spend all of their own personal money to stay, or to gain additional certifications at no cost to them. I know Darlene Raminick spends lots of time going to different colleges and universities, starting to develop partnerships with them, to see the student, teachers, and the students that are going into education and are working with them. I heard of an example at Gold Hill Middle School, where they've created a program for their student interns, just making them feel special and part of the school, and providing them additional support to kind of hook them in and say, hey, you're doing a great job interning here, why don't you come teach here? So I think there's a variety of reasons. Liza, is there anything that I, that I missed in there that you wanted to mention?
All those things, I think, are key components. Shared, I think another component is turnover.
Ozzy, may I get her a mic?
Microphone. I think we saw an increase or uptick in the percentage of, you know, teachers leaving, and that was, I think, a big part of it was a component of COVID. A lot of fear and uncertainty about being, you know, protected and in close proximity with colleagues and students alike. But again, I do think a big part, as far as a reduction now, is that we did have several teachers, or some teachers who left us during and post-COVID, that were recruited into the private sector, that came back. And, and I think a component of that really is, speaks to the support that our teachers receive, not only from the district administration, but from the parent and the community as a, as a whole. And so we've received some of that feedback, and the other piece, as Mike alluded to, is we've received some funding. Of course, we have some Title II funds, and we also have received some rural recruitment initiative funds through SARAH at Winthrop, which has allowed us for the past two, two and a half years, to have kind of a pot of money that we can cover professional development, add-on certification areas, master's degrees, that we've been able to cover the cost for a lot of those courses for, for educators who are interested in maybe teaching something that they haven't been able to teach. They've been able to afford, with our help, to add-on areas that, you know, that they want to try something new and different, which I think keeps them here as well. They just appreciate that support that we've been able to give. So those are some of the key things that I feel have attributed to kind of a, hopefully, a decrease that continues in our turnover rate. Yeah, so those are, again, Mike touched on a lot of things, but those are just some additional things that I would share with you.
Hey, Anthony, before we move off of this one, can I just add? We knew we had a high degree of turnover with and post-COVID. Can you talk about how this number now that we're sitting at compares to pre-COVID numbers and/or sort of statewide, nationwide turnover numbers?
I wouldn't feel comfortable speaking about nationwide, but I can tell you that one of the resources that I, you know, appreciate is on the SARAH website, they keep year-to-year school year data from all public school districts about turnover, what areas. And so, pre-COVID, our average turnover rate was usually between eight and nine percent, and had been that way for a number of years. And I think, you know, that doesn't sound great, but it really is, kind of in my experience, because we do have so much, you know, so many families that move in and out of the area, area for job transfers, things like that. A lot of people are moving on to the next city-state because of job opportunities. So we, I think we're always going to have some of that in this area, but as far as now, this elevation and our, and again, our hope, we want to try to get down to that eight, nine percent, of course, even better than that would be, of course, our goal. Again, I think a lot of it comes down to having funding that, when we, you know, we conduct surveys, this is our third year, using Teach Upbeat, which is a national kind of company that assists districts with identifying needs, not only within their district of why, what, what causes teachers to stay, and what causes teachers to want to leave. For the three years, we've been kind of analyzing that data using their, kind of their guidance. A lot of it kind of comes back to principal leadership in the building. One of the key factors for retaining educators is the level and the satisfaction that they have with their leadership within their school.
And that was actually a point that Ellen Weaver made this morning in this, in a session that we were in, where while the teachers, from a student achievement, student learning standpoint, are the secret sauce, the, the principals are really the, the key to teachers being able to stay, feel comfortable, do their jobs to the best of their abilities with a, with a positive environment. So anyway, we have a bunch of principals in the audience. Thank you, guys.
Can I, can I add a little something? I don't want to go off that.
Yep, yep, yep.
So the, the litmus task force that I'm working on that's with SC Teacher in Columbia, one of the things that I have found so incredibly, like eye-opening, is the fact that the state and SARAH and some of the others are really finally starting to dive deeper into what the data says, because we may run, and we're actually low in the state, by the way, y'all, so I've seen, like, everybody across the board, and we are incredibly low. But what happens in this retention and, and leaving is, it also takes into account and knocks us when we promote someone from a teaching position to an assistant principal or an administrative assistant principal, or we take a teacher from being a teacher and put them in a coaching position. It's, it's a negative on that from their numbers, but from our numbers and from our perspective, that's a very positive thing, and is also very positive from retention and whatnot, but it, it plays the games both ways. So they're working on getting better at cleaning the data, and, and it's, you know, data is what it is. It's always, however good it goes in, is how good it comes back out, and the data previously hasn't necessarily been good and equal. So I'm proud of our results based on that task force and things that I'm seeing across the state compared to us.
Thanks. So I want to continue, so I want to get on the PLC topic.
Okay.
And I want to peel the onion a little bit, so I'm going to spend a few minutes on this here, just, just do a Q and A. So if my memory serves me correct, we first introduced this with Mr. Olinger back at Springfield. Is that correct?
So I guess our recent push was about 2023. I know Elementary has been doing it for quite a long time prior to that, and I know Mr. Olinger.
So let's dig in that for a second. So can you say Elementary was dealing with that quite a long time? So what do you mean by that? So we're dating back?
Would you have about a year approximation of when you guys started the PLC work at Springfield?
We started it in 2017, Springfield Middle, a little bit before us.
Okay. So I think we had some sporadic PLCing back in 2017, 2018, and it really became a district focus for making sure that we're all doing it, probably about three, four years ago, I would guess, and really ramping it up over the last two years.
Okay. So how do we, or how can we quantify that that framework works?
I think it's always hard in education to have a direct correlation between an input and an output, because there's so many different factors. There's classroom teacher factors, there's, you know, 18,000 students, but I would say our, our scores continue to increase since we've been working on it. So I can't point to a specific data point and say, this is making our student achievement better, but I think with our focus on it over the last few years and the increase in our scores would be, could be correlation, may not be causation, but I would point to our continued growth.
So how did we end up at Adely Stevenson High School in benchmarking or kind of picking their brains on the PLC topic?
So they are recognized as a, the prominent leader in the PLC process, and they pretty much wrote the book on it. And then when you look at John Hattie's research, collective teacher efficacy is the most impactful lever on learning, based on meta, meta-analysis of thousands of, or maybe hundreds of studies. I think it's thousands, but I don't want to misspeak. So that is a proven way to So that is a proven way to increase student achievement. And the way I like to talk about it is being a PLC is like practicing collective teacher efficacy. It's getting teachers together in groups to talk about student learning and coming up with ways to increase student learning. So with my prior history working with PLCs as a principal and assistant principal and the data that shows it works and the success that Stevenson has had led us to saying, hey, why don't we go visit and see what they're doing?
How do you believe our district, or let's say, teachers perceive that framework?
I think it's a, it's a mixed bag. I think teachers that have been doing it and are comfortable with it would probably say there's no other way to do it. Some of our teachers have been a little bit more hesitant going into it because it's a different operating, way of operating than they've had to do in the past. This year, I'm going to every single PLT meeting except for high school because they're all at the same exact time, so it would be impossible to get to all of them. But Peter and I are going to every elementary PLT, so it's about 66 of them, and Gales and I are working our way through the middle schools. And when I see the work that they are doing, especially the ones that have been doing it for multiple years, I don't think they'd want to do it any other way because they see how effective it is in the classroom for managing the workload, for collaborating with other really smart people, the fellow teachers. So I think the teachers that are doing it like it, I think there's room to grow. I think there is some pushback on it for teachers that may not be as comfortable with it.
Not to put you on the spot, but if we were to go by a feel, 50%, 60% buy-in, what would you say?
Higher than that, for sure.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
I would probably say, including K-12, 85%. Elementary would be way higher, middle school would be really high, but not 100% I'm sure. And high school, it's hard to know because we have so many teachers, I would say maybe like 70% would be my best guess.
Okay. And last question here for you. So when it comes to, when we go back to when we initially implemented or five years ago, whenever it was, are we revising our playbook on how we introduce it or implement it and execute it?
Certainly. So we have the PLC playbook that we created. That's a living document where it kind of outlines what we believe about PLCs, how they should work, how they should operate. We continue to send teachers to training. We have PLC coming to do an institute here this summer, which we're really excited about. We have about 285 teachers that signed up for that to give up their time on the summer for two days. That will be at River Trail with some of the big dogs and PLC coming to talk directly to our teachers. So it's an ongoing process, and the great thing about PLCs, it never ends because teachers are always learning and growing and teacher teams are changing because we have new teachers or a teacher leaves. So it's just a collective cycle of getting better and better at teaching.
What would you say we may have gotten better at over the years regarding this framework?
I think we are, from the conversations I hear when I'm in the PLTs, really focused on student learning, of course, standards. And that might seem like really, really simple, but that's a big mindset change for some teachers. I was a high school teacher. I know when I was a high school teacher, there was not PLCs at the school I was at, this is down in Florida, like each teacher did their own thing. And if you taught the standards, you could, you taught the standards, and if you didn't, no one really ever said anything. But that was quite a while ago, and things have changed with accountability and testing. We have to make sure our teachers are teaching what the standards say and collaborating and talking to others about not just me figuring out how best to teach this, but now my whole team, we're working together to figure out the very best way to teach this. And then, I think more importantly, or just as important, coming up with plans on what we do when students don't learn it. Because we know for sure, anything we present to students, 100% of them are not going to get it the first time. So let's talk about what we're going to do before we even get to that stage, so as soon as the student shows they don't get it, we're able to react to that. So I think we've gotten really good at that.
Thank you, sir.
Certainly.
Consistency.
Can I add on to that? I think, I think, I hope, one of the things that we've also seen improve is sort of a time allocation, because I know early on, the idea of setting aside planning time and working with other people, when I've got all these other things that I need to do, because teachers have such a massive list of responsibilities, I feel like, but I wanted to see what you thought about that being, that's one of the things in here was to set aside time for teachers to really be able to do the PLCs.
Right. I think we've done a fairly decent job with that. There's only so many hours in the day to do that. I know at the high school level, with our flex period, moving that around and trying to get that set up. Middle school with their, they each call it something different, but basically their flex time, and it's a little bit easier with middle school because the structure of the middle school day builds in that collaborative planning. And elementary with the, one thing that we have that not all districts have is having related arts every day, where they're sending kids off to PE or music. Some districts, that's not an everyday thing in elementary school, so that makes it hard. Elementary schools are always more limited on time, but I think if we told elementary teachers they can't do PLCs anymore, I think they would revolt and say, well, how are we going to do our jobs? There's probably some that wouldn't say that, but I think that that time is so crucial to them.
Another question here, sorry, last one. Can you give us a peek under the hood when it comes to, you say that you and others go to our schools, is it the principals that have the impact on this, or is it our, our specialists? What, how do we make this be the best version of itself?
I think both of those people are critical. It has to be the principal. If a principal does not have buy-in and support, it's going to be really hard to get the teachers to have buy-in.
Do you have buy-in from all of your principals?
I would say yes. I would say yes.
Okay.
Yep. I would say varying degrees, but I would say 100% yes. I can, I would be willing to assure you that our PLT meetings are happening and they, the teachers are getting together and discussing, you know, and it's, it varies from team to team. But I think the principals are a key part, the PLC specialists at the high school are a key part, our APIs, our APs, they're all a critical feature of that. And as a district, I think the more we talk about it, I'm sure every teacher is sick of hearing me talk about PLCs, but that's all I talk about because I think it's that important.
So I'm a process-driven person and work in all of that stuff, and so that's where the Q and A is coming from. We have this initiative, we think highly of it, and normally us up here think highly of something, but we need the folks that are, that are in the trenches to buy into it.
Right.
And so that, that's where the Q and A is coming from.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Certainly.
So I have one more, and actually, that's a great segue. Consistency in grading. I know that's been a challenge.
Yes.
And it's been, I think it's been tweaked and adjusted a couple times. Is that still undergoing revisions to try to figure out where the sweet spot is?
Certainly. Yeah, so we, this year, implemented some common grading practices, and this is based off of our Cognia feedback from three or four years ago for this plan, where they said, as a district, we need to have some commonalities, especially when it comes to grading. And so what we did a few years ago is where, maybe two years ago, we sent out a survey to all the teachers just to get a gauge of where we are with our grading practices. We wanted to see where we are and where we need to go. We heard a lot of great things, but some of the things that we heard that I knew, we all knew we needed to fix is within a PLT, so let's just say, I don't want to pick any, let's say Math 1, because we don't have Math 1 in North, and that's in North Carolina, so I won't, but let's just pretend we had a course called Math 1. And at one school, there's four Math 1 teachers, and one teacher gives an hour of homework for completion grade, and the next teacher does not give homework whatsoever the whole year. And one teacher gives two hours of homework, and one teacher gives a quiz every day. And we're grading this, those students and those four classes are competing against each other, I hate to say it that way, but they are, for GPA, for scholarship points. And when grades are done so differently within a same course like that, it really leads to some problems with consistency of grading. Some teachers won't grade a quiz, or some teachers will double the quiz and it's almost worth a test. So we just saw a lot of incongruencies, so we wanted to set up some guardrails for that. We have, so we put that in place. We've made changes for the high school this year at the semester because it's a new course. We haven't made changes at the middle school. I think Elementary, we made one way early in the year, but at high school, it's a new course, so we felt comfortable making a pretty significant change in the middle of the year. We've recently had our grading committee together for middle and high school within the last month or so. We got great feedback, we sent it out to all teachers, so all the teachers saw the feedback, and we're currently working with the principals to make some adjustments for next year.
Because I know things like the, being able to retake.
Right.
And whether it counts full or partial and that kind of stuff, you know, has just been, it's an adjustment.
Yes. Yep.
But it still, it sounds like it's still a work in progress as we learn more.
Certainly.
Okay. Questions?
Chronic absenteeism, this is 3.2, is that referencing staff or students?
Students.
Okay. And do we have any kind of a pulse or indication, and I think we have had this discussion in the past, so maybe I can repeat the same statement that I made then. I realize, and my kids are now not at a stage and an age where I have to fight with them about getting up, getting ready, and going to school, but I realize that that can be trying at times, and you pick and choose your battles at home. But the reality is, if a child is not present, they can't learn.
Right.
So do we have any, I don't know, tea leaves that tell us why that absenteeism is growing and increasing?
So it's really a variety of reasons is what we found out, obviously, from a mental health aspect is one. Some of it is family not bringing their kids to school. Some of it's kids aren't, parents are going to work, kids aren't getting on the bus, are not getting their rides to school. We have Megan Gray and also Alana, who are, is Alana Visbeck, who is our social worker, and they are doing a lot, they're putting a lot into this, trying to, I mean, they're going out trying to find kids, contacting their parents frequently, they have a list that they're going by that have been chronic, chronically absent. Also, we are, we're looking at right now, what we're doing is, we're looking at a way to, and we've talked to Catawba Ridge about this, just piloting it with Catawba Ridge. I think we may have talked about this at a board meeting one time, but we are looking at what kids are involved in and tracking that, tracking where every kid, what club every kid is in, if they're playing sports, what is bringing these kids to school?
Right.
And tracking that and finding the kids that are not involved in anything and forming some type of, I mean, this is down the road, we're still looking at this, forming some type of focus groups or finding ways to get them involved in something, because we feel like we need to give, there's some kids that need a reason, they want a reason to come to school every day. And if it's not academics, we've got to find that reason to get them here. So there's different things that we can do, but I will say, we added the social worker, I think, two years ago, has been a big help, and then Megan, obviously, has picked that up with the chronic absenteeism as well, so.
I know Dr. Reps and I talked about it, I don't know, a couple months ago, because it has become a significant topic of discussion throughout the state, and I wasn't sure whether we had much of it here, and, you know, unfortunately, we do, just like everybody else, right? And I don't know exactly what the definition is of how many days, but it's a lot of missed school, to your point about, you know, only being able to learn if you're in attendance.
And I don't know exactly where we rank statewide, but I would think ours is less than a lot of districts.
It absolutely is, but again, we've got our share.
Right.
K-1 on ELA and math, and this is strategy or goal area 2.1. We had some dips, but I think, and I don't want to, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I'm curious to know, it seems to be consistently with grades one and two or K-1 that we've seen little dips here or there, whether it's ELA or it's math. I know our standards have changed multiple times, it seems like every year it seems
Yes.
Change once or something. Do we have an indication as to what, I mean, some's not significant, but like star math one and two, grades one and two dropped by, let's call it 3%. And then the star literacy K-1 dropped by almost 5%. Do we have an indication as to maybe what has precipitated that?
So I take that one, Peter?
They're still high, they're still good, but they're not, they're not where they were the previous year or where our goal is.
So that's something we've noticed before, too. We don't know how much of it was pre-kindergarten, a lot of things were a little bit more shut down, not attending pre-K type programs, and some of those were abbreviated. We don't know how much of it is that, but we are watching that closely, but I think, as you know, with the state mandated letters training, even though that is a lot of training, good feedback from teachers is that has been very beneficial. We anticipate for that to go up, and we've also been doing a lot of work with math as well, with math standards. Kristi Swigunsky and our math coordinator have been pulling committees from every grade level across the district as they prepare, in this process, as we prepare for the new standards, there's been a lot of work going on that, and we'll be continuing to work on success criteria and proficiency ratings and that. So we anticipate and hope for those to go back to where they were. So I think with ELA coming back about 2022, we kind of, 2023, we were like 74, 75%.
78.
I'm pulling that out of the air, I think that's about right. When, I think, around 1920, 2019, I think we were around 67%. So we shot up and then dipped a little bit, if I remember right.
Well, and it would be my anticipation that our new learning, early learning facility will make a huge difference where any and all of that is concerned, but we're a little bit off till that comes online.
Correct. So, and if you may remember, we added three cert-up pre-K programs last year, we bumped it to four this year, so we're able to serve many more additional kids. So we're hoping getting that early intervention and programming in for some students will be, you'll see that K-1 jump as well.
Okay. Thank you.
And I would say that, that specific benchmark is the one that's most reliant on factors outside of our control with pre-K.
Right, definitely. Okay.
Any other questions?
All right.
All right, we will be back in a couple weeks for approval, hopefully for approval. Thank you.
That's right. And Peter Olinger, you're going to come up again and give us a swim program update?
Yeah, so yeah, happy to talk about swim. Mike said I should have wore some swimmies or something to get costume, but yeah, so I passed on that tonight. But just for the benefit of the public, you know, we brought this program back, starting in 2021. We had this program for many years until 2009, when Sugar Creek and Pleasant Hole opened, and we had too many schools and classes to, for our local aquatics facilities. So that was a big part when we added the FMAC, I think in the late teens, 2010s, and we'll be able to bring this program back in 2021. So we're four years back into it, and you're going to be visiting early April, so this is kind of a, again, just for benefit of the public and to update you on how the program's going. So just to kind of give a brief summary of how this works, we go with second grade in our district, we feel like kind of other surrounding districts do fourth grade, but we feel like the younger we can catch these students because it is life-saving aquatic skills that we're able to provide these students in second grade. So it's offered to all of our second graders in the district, it's a four-day program, they start on Mondays, unless it's, we have a Monday off, then they go to Friday, but it's nice to start on the Monday because if we miss a day for whatever reason, we have a Friday makeup day. They are 45-minute classes, we have, there's, the Y dedicates four instructors for the program, and a lifeguard is also on duty. So it's a lot of hands on deck, plus the teacher that comes with that particular class, that's another adult that's there with them. And all of these take place at the complex. We have that whole pool to ourselves, plus we have, there's two mini pools if you've never been in there before, which is great because sometimes we have kids who aren't quite ready, so we have these other options for some kids that need it. But the first day they get there, they do a skills test, and I'll show you what those four skills are, they'll initially put them in one of four swim levels to start that week. And at the end of that week, the Y will provide them a splash pass, so that there's four levels, I'm going to go and switch to that, and I'll continue to talk about it. So if we have a student that starts on that day one on a basic aquatic skills and they don't pass that basic aquatic skills, they get a free splash pass for swim lessons in the summer to continue working on their aquatic skills and safety that summer, which is a huge benefit. Or if we have a class or a student who's absent, the class doesn't make it up, they're not able to make it up for whatever reason, which we just actually had a class that were in that situation due to all the weather delays and things and days off, we actually have a group that has to have the splash pass, or if a student's just absent, so they get to make up that class in the summer. So there's your four levels, they have the basic, you have some that are, that'll go to fundamental, and then they'll have just level three stroke mechanics, and then the level- And then they'll have just level three stroke mechanics and then the four stroke improvement. So it is interesting. You get some kids that have been on swim team since kindergarten and they hop in and they're, they're, they're down the lane in no time. They're going to level three or four. And then you have some who've never been in the water before. So they do a great job of leveling those students and working with them where they are to meet, to meet their need. And they give them fun superhero names as well to make it fun for our, our second graders. This is an example of the schedule. So I, I work with the principals to kind of find out, try to dodge whatever special events they have going on through the year. We try to give them the last week of October off because that is second grade COGAT and achievement testing. So we try to leave a week out for that as well. So we try to piece it together and we have weeks usually at the end of the school year if we need to do many makeups at the end. So that's a brief look at what that looks like for the schools. This is data that the Y puts together. I'm, I'm sharing with you, I have the last two years of data. The data's cleaned up a little bit from twenty-two to twenty-three. So you can see we had over thirteen hundred swimmers both years. So you're gonna see, we, we start again, serve all eleven schools. We did have forty-four non-swimmers two years ago. That means they did not participate for a variety of reasons. It could be that they're absent or their parents didn't want them to, or they feel that they should participate at that time. So we had about fifty-nine percent of our kids that did pass and were able to go on to the next swim level. We had twenty-nine percent that did not. I don't have broken down into how many states as that level one. It, it's, it's a, when usually most classes, to my understanding, it's less than a fourth of the class start off in that level one. And a lot of those do graduate on up. But occasionally we get some students that don't. But again, we'll get that splash pass to, to continue to get service there. Going on, then we, this is last year's data. We had fifty-five percent pass their level, forty-one percent didn't. Again, then we had about a little less than four percent that were, were non-swimmers that did not participate for whatever reason. So looking pretty good there with that data. And I, I do wanna say just a huge thanks. Shayna Downey, who's the director of the complex Y is absolutely amazing to work with. And Harry Truesdale, who's been running swim programs at the complex for many years, he is great. The kids love him. He starts every day with a riddle. They, they just completely, you'll probably, when you come for your visit early April, you probably get a riddle from, from Harry. See if you, if you can get that from him. And then of course, I want to thank transportation because they're, they're doing midday runs. We work with, with Tammy and her department to get those with the, with the, all the schools to and from. And then to our principals and teachers as well, because this is a change in their master's schedule for four days. And you, you probably saw from the schedule, this usually breaks over a couple of different weeks. So it does change school schedules a little bit, meal times, all those things. So a big thanks to our principals and teachers.
Peter, the Y came in and did the four day plan or, or one week plan was different than what we did before. And we had trouble with pool space until we built the other pool. And then they came in and we were skeptical that the four days would not be enough, but we, we're pleased, I think, I'm hearing you.
Yes. So when we, yeah, so when we met over four and a half years ago, when we're bringing this back, we, because of the original, I believe it was eight days, if I remember correctly, and looking at the number of schools and second grade home rooms. This year's schedule is a little looser because we just had a few less second grade classes. But last year, it would have been hard, it was hardly any wiggle room in that, in that schedule. And then bringing on a twelfth school and more teachers, more home rooms, excuse me, that's gonna make the schedule even tighter. But we, we can start earlier and go a little later in the school year if we need to. But we did go to the four days and we have seen and talking with Shayna is that we, we feel like things are, are going well with giving them those skills. Again, the goal is really to get them water safety, you know, to make sure that if they were to fall in the water, they, they would be okay and could get to safety.
Obviously, when the program happened before, it was before the aquatic center. So it was done at the Baxter Y. I thought I had heard conversations about us needing to do some at the aquatic center and some at the, the Baxter Y. That's not in the plans right now?
So actually, the first three years, we split. If you're on the west side of town, we sent you to Baxter. If you're on the east side of town, we would go to the complex. And then kind of talking with principals, student needs as well, with that the complex had multiple pools in that area. Especially we, we have some students even with special needs that they, they need more of a level type of pools because you got the, the one foot than like two foot pools. We felt like we could basically do tiered instruction with, at that site a lot better for some kids that really just needed to literally get their feet wet before they moved into the big pool. And talking to the principals that are on that west, on the west side of town, it's, it's been a good change. Even though it's a little bit of a farther drive for Tiki K Elementary, it, it's been a good site and we hope to continue to use that. But depending how big we get, running out of calendar space, we may need to go back to, you know, sending some to the Baxter pool if we need to. But it's been great having it at, at the complex.
My kids loved it.
Right. Yeah, it's a lot of smiling faces.
I mean, you're like, you know, it's a second grader and you get like, this week, we're gonna go swimming.
Right.
Yeah. It's pretty cool.
They look forward to it.
And, and they have their little bags and towels and yeah, goggles and all that.
And the Y is great too. They, they usually drop their bag. So each swimmer gets a bag and they'll get that usually the Thursday before so they can come in on Monday with their stuff, ready to go. And they have extra towels and goggles and stuff like that to, for any student that may need goggles or for one that definitely needs a towel.
How co- how common, Peter, is, is this type of program for, for a school district?
It's common in the Lancaster, York area. Our districts, I can't say statewide. I haven't heard like what Columbia and Greenville do. There, there's kind of sporadic, but I know Lancaster, I believe Chester, Clover, York, Rock Hill, to my knowledge.
And there are others in the state because I know when we've been at conference, I've been to a couple of breakout sessions where they've talked about their programs and they're very similar.
Right.
Um, I don't know that it's twenty percent of the districts in the state, but there are other districts that do it that touch lakes. And, and to your point, we, we have so much water, first of all, around us with the lake. And we also have a population that spends a lot of time at, at a beach or, you know, has the opportunity to do that. And so I'm, I'm guessing along the coastal areas, it's probably more, more prevalent than some of the, you know, middle of the state parts. But, um, and it's a wide variety to your point. I've been there when they've been doing the classes before and, and you do. You have kids that are on the swim team and do multiple strokes and those that are absolutely terrified and, and holding on to the neck of the, of the instructor, you know.
And, and, and you've probably seen too, on that day one, you're, you're gonna see where some of them come in real, can be scared. And by the end of that class, they're already getting in. It's, it's amazing how fast some of those that don't have any experience, they, they, they get used to it really quick. So excited that you all be able to come in April and see it.
Thank you.
Questions?
Alright, thanks.
Um, alright. Um, boy, this kind of just snuck in without much fanfare. Our next discussion is on the school calendar. Mr. Burke, come on up.
I know it's not quite as weighty as the swim class, so try to get through it pretty quickly. No, we are back to you now talking about the, I wanna make sure I get the years right, twenty-six, twenty-seven school calendar. So we already have twenty-five, twenty-six. That's for the next school year. You guys approved that earlier this school year, so the last calendar year. Um, and as we talked back then, when we were looking at that, we wanted to get back to our two-year-out calendars. That is something that was very popular, both with our staff and our community. It helps to scheduling our PD. It helps our families with their planning, all of those types of things. So when we did our previous calendar surveys and feedback information and all of that, we, you know, talked about that we were gonna, when we asked for that feedback, we were asking for it so that we could look at getting back to a standard model of the two years. So what we are looking at tonight is a calendar that is similarly structured to what we just approved for next school year. There are a couple little tweaks in this one just because of the change in the number of days. And to remind you all, this is an even numbered starting year. So that means we are required to have election day off by state law. So that adds an extra day off every other year in the calendar that we have to account for. We are again, looking at the model where we have what I would call a fall week-long break. Can't call it a winter break, so let's call it an early spring break and then the later spring break weeks built into this. Start date, because of where things fall, to be able to get the ninety, ninety balanced semesters, because that is one of the main goals of this calendar. Start date of teachers on the twenty-seventh of July and students on the third of August. One of the differences in this one, we really worked hard in the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar for these week-long breaks to make them true breaks for those staff members that were eligible for it. Unfortunately, because of having to account for the election day and how the days numbered out, you will see in October, we did have to put one of the teacher workdays in that timeframe. That was a choice because if we did not do that, we would be looking at moving up the student start date into July thirty-first, which we definitely want to avoid, uh, because that would back our teachers back up to the twenty-fourth. Or we would be looking at having a single half day that week leading into Christmas, which we know is gonna be very unattended. And does, it would basically be a throwaway of a school day. So we were trying to accommodate that as best we can. We hope to every year that we're working these weeks in, we do not need to do that. Unfortunately, this is just one of those years with the way the days fall out that it became necessary to do it. Some of the other big features in it, we do still have the early release days figured in, uh, on a Friday near the end of several of the months. We have a two full, a full two-week break at the winter break period, starting on the twenty-first, running through the first. And then we have the teacher workday on the fourth. That's an important workday for, especially for our high schools because it allows them to come in and roll over semester. It's also important for our transportation and facilities people because they can come in and check for any issues that we may or may not have had over the break, including possible issues from winter weather, which we have experienced plenty of this year. We still have our, our, of course mandated by state, uh, weather makeup days identified. But again, you know, we generally have, have tried to move towards the e-learning on the day of missed, uh, if at all possible to make that plan. And then spring break falls in this particular calendar, just to try to balance out the breaks. It comes after the Easter holiday. So it starts on Monday, the twenty-ninth and runs through April second. And then we have a final last day of school on Friday, May twenty-eighth. That's again, gonna pretty much mirror similar to what we're doing with our twenty-five, twenty-six calendar. So our hopes is this is just gonna come with a structure moving forward. So I'll be happy to answer any of the questions of how we created this model for you guys. And this is just presented for information tonight. We'll be bringing it back to you at the next meeting, hopefully for a recommendation for vote.
Mr. Burke, question for you.
Yes, sir.
I know you've been doing this a long time and many others. Are there any takeaways in the last, I'm, I'm, I'm just curious. Is this just the same old show? Just I.
Well, I wouldn't.
In a very loving way.
If we were still, uh, if we were still operating underneath the very strict layout that's in state law for non-modified calendars, then yeah, I would say it's the same old show. But over the course of the past three years, since we started really looking at and trying to identify the modified calendar that we wanted to move to, to be able to better support, you know, our teaching and learning, while at the same time balancing some of the things our parents and community were looking for, I would say it's not the same old show anymore. We do have a lot more flexibility and freedom with this. Granted, we did try to identify a model that works for us. But the model that works for us may not match a model that works for a district in, in another part of York County or even a district in Lancaster or across the state. So what we've really seen with this is this is now giving districts the freedom to create calendars that work best for them. I've seen calendars that bring kids, matter of fact, this was just talked about at a recent, uh, meeting that I was at, that had kids coming back as early as the second or third week of July. Yes, it's, it's quite an interesting setup there. Um, I would assume those districts are not down at the beach because I would assume that would make for a really big problem. But, uh, and then there are still some school districts that are working off the original models where they're not coming back till the third Monday and everything in between. So I think what you're seeing now is that districts are starting to identify what works best for them and moving forward with that. You do wanna have some structure, but you also need the freedom to account for specific situations.
Thank you.
I mean, obviously we haven't done it yet. The, the, the one thing that I have heard some folks talk about is, um, and I don't, I don't know where Easter falls on here, but it seems like.
It is on March the twenty-eighth, which is that Sat, the Sunday right before spring break starts.
Twenty-sixth is Good Friday.
Right.
Yep.
Okay. What, cause, cause what I was gonna say is, um, I know the fall break was very highly sought after.
Yes.
And I think having two breaks in the second semester is, is always desirable. But one being pretty early after we come back and then, then being closer together and then a very long stretch at the end is, is one of the pieces of feedback that I've, I've heard about. So I didn't know if there was any opportunity around that.
Yeah, we, we looked at all of that. Part of one of the reasons why you do have a little bit longer stretch from spring break going into the school year, you have state testing that's gonna happen in the window in there. We have a requirement that has to fill in for that. AP scheduling is also another big factor on that. We do try to minimize that as much as possible. And we looked at, you know, had we maybe moved spring break to the week before Easter and then pulled the fall break out and put it lower down. The problem we ran into there was then we were gonna start buttoning to some of those issues with moving it back. Now, I will say, in the feedback process, we heard leading into the last calendar, and then after it was approved by you all and we posted it publicly out there as well too, I would say ninety-nine point something percent of the feedback has all been positive on the calendar. So I, I haven't heard a lot of complaints, which is why we did feel comfortable with coming back and making this our, our, our schedule. Now, is everybody happy with every part of it? Probably not, but I think there's a little bit of something in there for everybody. We're trying to protect as much of the summer as we can while balancing the semesters and still offering the breaks in there. So I think that was part of the key. And, and to some of the points you guys were talking about earlier, uh, with student attendance, chronic attendance, obviously these breaks are meant to maybe help with that, some of that as well too. Students who are feeling burned out or having issues, you know, coping with the high stress, this gives them a little bit of extra time off.
Or other available times for family travel and things like that.
Family travel, um, that February is probably, what I've heard is gonna be a very popular one for the February one we have coming up next school year. It's gonna be very popular for college visits. Gives maybe a chance to double visit if you're going in early February. And again, it's spring break. So we, we have heard a lot of positives. And some of the things that we obviously did here mostly circled around the summertime issue with some of the travel that was not gonna be able to stay as it had been. They would have to move or change travel, which I understand that that's, you know, an individual family situation and we're hoping that these extra breaks would offer some other opportunities for that as well too. But I would say again, the overwhelmingly large, vast majority of feedback was in support of this particular model.
And then the only other thing I would say, just when looking at this, you know, again, it's one of those where things fall at weird times at different, different years. But Memorial Day is early.
Yes.
And so as much as we, you know, it's desirable to, if there's an opportunity to get out, but it, it's very early.
Now, I will say, even when Memorial Day is gonna fall a little bit later, it's still gonna be hit or miss to get the ninety days in when you're including in the, the breaks in that second part of the semester. But yeah, that is a goal. I mean, we've heard from a, a, a large portion of our population, they'd like to be out before Memorial Day. So we do try to look at that. Unfortunately, there's just gonna be some calendars like this where that's not because of the where it falls. It just.
At least because of where it falls and we're able to get the school year done still in May.
Yes, yes.
You know, and, and have all of June and July before happening.
So the ultimate goal with this is try to at least protect June and July for students and for teachers as much as possible. Obviously with the teacher workdays that are mandated to come before the start of the school year, we are always gonna have some workdays that are gonna fall there. I did look at the ability to maybe start the week in the middle of the week like we have planned for, I believe, this coming year. Unfortunately, again, ran into the same problems where now you're wrapping around, you'd have people trying to go to school on the twenty-first or twenty-second leading right up to Christmas Eve, which we know are not very highly attended, uh, days whenever we have to do that. So, you know, it is a little bit of moving the blocks around, trying to, to meet as best of the options as we can.
Joe, no. Go ahead. Well, I, I, I think I'm going to ask the same question, but in a different way from what you were asking. I think, I think if I'm.
Give it a shot.
We, we have multiple three-day weekends between when we come back from the holiday break and the beginning of March, let's say. Three, three-day weekends and then a full weekend there as well. And, and spring break being overlapping the last week of March, beginning of April is actually a really good break time in, in the spring, traditionally in the spring calendar. Is there an opportunity or, or do we consider not doing the spring, the second spring break and getting out before Memorial Day?
Uh, we did not put that in based on the feedback that we got that everybody wanted this. So no, we, we didn't consider it. I, I would say the amount of people who've asked us to get out before Memorial Day versus the amount of people who've asked us to have that week is not even close in balance.
That's the answer.
And, and you're on the spring. I'm actually on the fall semester because I feel like, and, and I know how we need and, and have maximized days. But I feel like nine weeks when we kick off the new school year until the first break. And then it seems like there's a big break every month thereafter. I would love if we could back up that October break to the end of September, but.
You could do that, but then you're gonna have to add another school day in somewhere. So that's the other thing. So really, if you, if you take that, those four days that I'm accounting for right there and make them five days, then we're back to that same thing where we have to move them around. So if you were gonna move into September, really the only place to move it would be to tie it to September seventh with the Labor Day holiday. And then you're gonna have that same long break from that point, running all the way from that time around through down to Thanksgiving.
You couldn't, you couldn't just do it a week earlier? The, the fifth through the ninth and just change the colors on those dates or even the twenty-eighth through the. The, the fifth through the ninth and just change the colors on those dates or even the twenty eighth through the second?
If we move the teacher work day up, yeah, we could probably do that. I need to double check what's on the twelfth. We've traditionally, that's where we've had that teacher work day because it generally coincides with some of the things that are going on at the elementary level. But we could look at very, well, ELC is moved. So yeah, we used to have it there for ELC. ELC is now moved into February. So that's where that first date that's in there. That's where that's tied to. So that's less on the twelfth, but it is again, it traditionally in the past has been tied to some of our elementary stuff and ELC. But if that's not an absolute necessity, we could certainly look at that. So y'all are thinking maybe bump that up a week? Is that what we're looking at there?
Week or whatever works. Yeah, a week or two, whatever works in your mathematics.
Well, I'll get and, and talk with Gales and Peter some more and we can see if there's anything that, that is a necessity to have that there. For both the, the elementaries and secondary. And, and if not, I don't see any reason we couldn't move it. As long as it's not tied to any specific events or things that they have planned.
Right.
Well, I'm going to be contrary and just say that I appreciate you bringing one recommendation from the administration. And that, looking at this, maybe there's tweaks, but I think this is a beautiful calendar and I appreciate not having to piece back and forth. So.
Yes, agree.
Well, that was the goal of the last process. I know that was a little bit of an undertaking and trying to come through, but when we were trying to identify the structure we wanted to use moving forward, that's kind of where we're at now. Moving forward from here, the goal is to continually stay this two years out. And this is the type of calendar we would be looking at bringing to you guys with a single recommendation.
Yeah, I, I, I would just add, I, I agree with Lippy. I, I, I really like this calendar. I think this looks really good. So something that we, just, just to get full clarity on this, this was kind of a big deal when we've gone through this in the past. Any of these weeks off, are there any remediation offerings?
Not right now, no. We're still moving forward with this being a break for eligible staff. And I want to repeat that eligible staff. We do have staff members in the district that are on different levels of contract. So traditionally, this is obviously going to apply to our teachers and that kind of thing. So no, right now, this is strictly targeted just for considering into a break for students and staff at, at the way we've built this out. We did look at remediation. We've been looking at the participation rates. A lot of the districts who originally had designed these remediation have now gone to this model where it's more break because of just. Very low participation and also staffing as well, too, because it would have to be a voluntary position. This is not part of, we only get a hundred and ninety days with our teacher contracts by state. So if we were to add these in, those would have to be separate contracts. And what we've also heard from other districts is they're having a hard time. Not so much with the October week because people generally want to do that to earn extra funds going into the holidays. But they've really had a tough time staffing the February one for sure. Because at that point, everybody's just, it's starting to warm up and everybody's ready to get out and go somewhere. So just because some of the challenges along with that, plus the costs associated with it, we decided to make this more of a mental rest break for teachers and students.
Thank you.
I, I guess the only other question or, or just comment, and it, it's just one other thing to think about. Is if you're looking at the October twelfth date. If you just shift that, it doesn't make a difference, but the October twelfth date. Are we worried about having a meaningful teacher work day that day and expecting folks to come to work?
I mean, that was a concern. And the only reason it is part of that week is because of the fact that there just wasn't another way to put that week in that made it work. Part of the issue originally, when I was looking at this, I, I thought, okay, I wanted to really make sure that was not tied to this. So I moved the week down in November and actually made election day be the, the part of the week as a date. But that caused problems for all the staff that are not on, going to be getting this. So they're going to have to come up with an extra day to make up for their work time. But more importantly, what we, we would have anticipated hearing is that by tying that week to that date. We're now encouraging people not to stay here and vote. We're encouraging them to travel and go somewhere else.
Right.
Agreed with that.
So, uh, so that's why I moved it off of that. I didn't consider putting it on the seventh because we would have only been in school. For about a month at that point, which is really when classrooms are starting to hit their stride after spending those first couple of weeks, especially the lower grades on getting the younger kids involved in protocol. So I didn't put it on the seventh originally.
That's too soon.
Yeah, because it was just too soon. So that's why I tied it to that twelfth. And the reason it's on that date is just that because traditionally that's where we put that teacher work day is in that range in October.
Parent conference.
Yeah, there, a lot of the parent conferences, though, I think have been moved to different timeframes, correct? They're not generally using them for the, on that teacher work day. Because of letters training. Yeah.
Right.
But in the past, some schools have used it for that, yes.
Okay.
But we're, we're probably, I mean, are we going to schedule like a district wide training on, on a day that, that the entire week is going to be?
Well, I think obviously with letters training, yes. Okay. But I heard from one of my principals back there, yes, they're going to be planning PD for that day.
Well, wait, wait. So Peter, did you say you're planning parent teacher conferences for that day most likely?
There aren't many parents.
So, so again, I mean, just, just a concern that you're going to have a parent teacher conference day on a week that everybody else is off.
Right. Well, and that there's not parents.
And that there, yeah, and the parents aren't going to be here because.
Right, right.
So have to think about that.
But I think again, you know, they made those, those changes for part of letters as well recently. So I don't know if the new systems work. So we'll have to go back and talk about that. But again, I don't, I, I, I don't see a feasible way where you can remove that week from that teacher work day. If you're, if you do that. I don't see a way to move the blocks around to make it logically fit. Either you're going to have to bring the kids back. Well, you either have to tie it to the seventh or the third, which I think we've talked about what the issues are with that. Or you're going to have this random string day that's either going to be down on the twenty first, twenty second, or up on the thirty first for kids to come in and make up that time.
Mr. Burke.
Yes, sir.
Could you share with the public? Kind of what, how the construction of a calendar? What, what, what are the synergies involved?
Sure. Well, there's a couple of things that are required by law that we put in. Obviously, we needed minimum of a hundred and eighty student days, students in classroom days. There are a hundred and ninety teacher work days. So when I put these things together, all of my blue days. And of course, the orange early release days and the yellow days have to add up to one eighty for the blue and then total one ninety with yellow included in. So that's the first, that's the very first process. After that, I start looking at getting the balanced ninety ninety day semesters. Because that is obviously something we've been trying to do for a very long time, so that both of our semesters are balanced days. Especially at the high school level, when you're rolling over to a new semester at that point. And obviously getting exams in before students leave for, from the winter break. So I would say that's probably the very first things that I look at as most important. And then as I'm putting these things in, obviously the five days at the beginning, they're in our yellow, those are things that have to be there. Technically, state law, I think mandates a minimum of four, but we use five because we have a lot of onboarding we have to do, getting back in the classroom, PD, all of that stuff. And then we start looking at the holidays that are part of board policies or federal or state policies that are required to have off. Those get pieced in. And then I start, then I get down to the point of looking at days we have control over, like those purple days.
Wow, okay.
About what I can do. So I really fill it in with what's required and what we believe is important. Then I start trying to see where I can piece those things in. And again, all of this boils down really the biggest difference here that caused this issue. And I won't call it an issue because I do think it's very important for everybody to participate in voting. So it's not an issue in that factor, but it is an issue because it's an extra day we have to count on. The state mandate for having the third off on even years throws it off. If you don't have that day, I could put five purple days anywhere in there.
Right.
And it would not cause any issues with anything else. Wouldn't have to shift anything you see around except for just moving those days around.
Thank you so much.
I am trying to think if there, it seems like I saw something in the legislature this year. I know last year there was something that might have mandated so many days for teachers ahead of time. I'm, I'm feeling like there's. Maybe it doesn't affect the calendar, it just affects the ability to require certain training or things like that.
Well, there was a couple of different bills last year. I don't know if they revived this year, but there was a couple of bills where they were looking at adding five days to teacher contracts. So it would go up to one ninety five. And there were multiple different versions of that one that said, okay, those days can be used for X, Y, and Z, and they have to be used at this time. But it didn't, it didn't push through. And I don't think that's come back up in this particular session.
I haven't seen anything like that.
Okay. It may be a year old memory.
Yeah.
It's highly possible that it's still swimming around in there.
Yeah, that was one of the things that was discussed, but it did not, it didn't move.
Kimberly, she usually knows.
Wait up.
I think Educator Assistance Act did say that at one point, when it was in committee, that they wanted three days without PD before school started. So three days in your classroom.
But that wasn't additional days. That was just that you couldn't use those days for more specific things.
Right. And I just want to make sure that if that were to be true, that the five days there is sufficient to meet all the needs.
Well, under the current law, it states that you use, I think it's two of the days at the beginning for PD. And then you use the other day, the other remaining days for different, I'd have to go back and look, see what the actual verbiage is. But there is some of that already in the current requirements that we pull that from to start with, that are outside of whether you're doing modified or not. They're just requirements for how you use these days. We just generally, when we label them on the calendar, we call them teacher work and professional development days because that's an easier thing to understand if we're trying to label each one individually.
Anything else? I'm almost afraid to ask, is there going to be any type of feedback process?
Uh, I don't think we're going to have a formal one because again, when we did this process just what, six months ago, eight months ago. We went through all of that. And at that time, we asked everybody, said, hey, please provide the feedback you're looking for here because this is the model we want to move forward. And again, the feedback we received after the approval was, you know, supported the last one that went through.
Okay. All right.
All right.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And then our next update, we'll let Lippy start it off. We, I don't know, was it last week that, or last meeting that you talked about our process?
Yes.
And we're going to give an update on it going forward?
The last meeting, our search committee recommended a search firm, BWP, that we chose. And they will be, they are here tonight to share with the community at large about the process, just to keep everybody on board with where we are. BWP has had one on ones with all seven of us and gotten our feedback on what we think the community needs and what we think we would like to see. Various focus groups have been reached out to and have meetings scheduled. That includes senior staff, administration, toys, support staff of the year, parent support groups, SICs. Elected officials have all been invited. We've also created an open forum for any employee that wants to come face to face that did not feel like they were already invited. That one is tomorrow evening. And then Thursday evening for any community members that would like face to face time with the search committee. That were not included in one of the other invitations also. So we're trying to create as many opportunities as possible. Hopefully everyone is aware of the survey and those that want to fill it out have filled it out. I'm sure we'll get an update on that. And I believe there is a portion of the survey where if you'd rather just email direct comments, you can do that. So we're trying to get as much input as possible and make your job very hard, Mr. Kastner, to boil it down for us. But I'm going to turn it over so that he can share with the community and hopefully everyone will be able to see why we picked BWP.
Madam Chair, members of the Board of Trustees. I'm very happy to be here this evening. I had a very thorough interview with your team. I want to first say. That we already have people that are going to be applicants that are watching your board meetings.
Sure.
This is a type of board meeting that you'd hope people would want to come and work because you talked about instruction. You talked about everything in a way where you, how you worked with staff, the conversations. This isn't true everywhere. I've had a board meeting in another state where. There was a big gavel and one of the board members, when they turned off their mic, brought out a megaphone. A lot of meetings that don't get over till two o'clock in the morning. So you need to pat yourself on the back and you're going to have your controversies. I understand that. But tonight, for potential candidates watching your work. It was pretty impressive. And I have been into more than a few board meetings over the years. So what I'd like to do is share the same presentation. I probably will just make sure that other board members. Might have some questions, but more importantly for this evening, this is for the public. The transparency that you have in first establishing a process to hire a search firm. And then you hire them where you are trusting them to come into your community as board members and listen to what people have to say. Same time you're doing a survey. And that's a transparency in itself. And as I go and explain this process, we'll talk a little bit more about some avenues on that. So you're the most important people here. And this is the most important job you have, hiring a superintendent. If you get it right, people are going to be happy. If you don't, there's going to be an election. Now, you're doing this all for the right reasons. You're doing this because, and I do know that Percy, when he had a chance to talk with all of you. Talked about that you're talking about the right things. Students are at the front, forefront. But as board members. You're going to have to make the decision. You will make the decision. But you'll have input along the way from the public. And I'm going to explain that while we're going to be here this week, we would hope the public would continue to have conversations with you. All to the point when you start your interviews that are going to happen in May. So this is going to be for a while. And once you have a new superintendent, hopefully these same people are going to be out during the transition. Maybe saying some of the same things, but they're saying to the person that's going to be in charge as a partner with you and the board. So you're front and center here. This is really an exciting time for school systems. You have a good school system, but even as you are going to make the transition, you want to keep getting better. And you talked about that when you're talking about your strategic plan. Although I'm going to probably put it aside here. You probably need to start your strategic plan next year. You shouldn't wait another year. Because the momentum of a new board and a new superintendent, you can continue that if you have to wait a year. And the other thing is, and, and I say this because I'm president of Cambridge Strategic Services. And I've done about sixty strategic plans all across the country. And the timing of a superintendent search. And then the entry, when you're talking about the transition. You're, even after four years, you're talking about some new parents. But you're also talking about new momentums as things evolve. And in this country, there's a lot of stuff going on. So I don't know what your state regs are. But we do find that a timeliness of that happening and then in the same process engaging your public. And the fact that when you're bringing a new strategic plan, you build upon all the good things that are already there. But again, it's repurposing with the leadership of the board and the superintendent. That's just something that I, I thought with the, all of you here, I'd like to say it one time. And that's something you might at least consider. But you know, that isn't up for me. That's up for whoever you're going to choose. And that's the conversation that should occur more probably in June, when you're talking about working towards the next school year. We actually have three people that are going to be part of the team. And we are very deliberate. First off, we choose what districts we want to work with. We want to do superintendent searches in districts we might like to be superintendents. I would put this on there. Actually, Frank Morgan. He was superintendent for twelve years in Kershaw. And he'll be down here again. He's now living in Richmond. And I hired him as an assistant superintendent a long time ago. And so we have a great relationship and we've done several searches. We'll explain some of the places at least that you might be familiar with. Dr. Percy Mack has been a superintendent in Dayton. And then he has been a superintendent in Richland One. So knowledge of South Carolina is important. Now, I'm not from South Carolina. I'm from Charlottesville, Virginia. But I think when you look at our proposal, you'll see Frank is, is instructional leader. He's been involved in a lot of this. And Percy Mack, again, knowing this area. And his great experiences. And then my part of the team. I was superintendent in Almarle County in Charlottesville, but spent twenty five years in Maryland. In Frederick County, which is forty thousand, Prince George's is a hundred thousand, Charles about thirty. So our variety of experiences. At different sized systems need to be put in a perspective for your district. There's fifteen thousand districts in the country. Only one percent are greater than twenty thousand. And you're going to be pushing that in a year or two. So the complexity of a school district size is something that does have a different skill set than an average. than an average district in Iowa, which is 3,000. Maybe doesn't have some of the diversity, maybe doesn't have some of the dynamics of your growth. So there's a lot of people that probably are very good superintendents, but the skillsets that I think you're gonna set the bar for into continuing with a successful superintendent here now are gonna narrow the field a little bit. And our experience is gonna contribute when we want to bring you people that are going to have the types of things, if anything, that you're gonna have a tough time making a decision. So in talking about our process, we want to work with the board in finding the best candidate. We want to try to figure out how we can engage your community and your staff. We want to recruit skilled candidates that have track record and also have data to prove the body of their work. And we want a successful completion. And you all have chosen to do an expedited search. We think we can pull it off. A lot of that had to do with the agility of your staff in actually getting us, even though, we would normally have had this meeting, we kind of got the cart before the horse, but didn't affect anything. Because the cooperation through your board chair and the idea of getting staff, we actually kind of did things and saved a couple of weeks in order to meet your deadline. And that was our goal. And we will meet that deadline. So understanding, probably one of my first searches was Greenville. That was a lot of years ago. And Bert Royster's still there. He was an internal candidate, he won his way. And on some of these searches, some of these candidates are internal, some of them are external. We don't treat them any differently. If they apply, they meet the leadership profile, then we would consider moving them forward. But we recently worked in Ori. Actually, we've worked in there before. We've done Orangeburg, Georgetown, Sumter, Charleston, but Charlotte Meck, not too far away. And we're talking a lot of these very recently. One of the systems, Arlington, is a little bit like your system. It's a high-flying system, a lot of expectations from parents, but still has a lot of diversity. Chicago was a challenge. The mayor hires it, but they hired us to do the search and it was just an interesting experience. So Columbus, I don't know, we have Pittsburgh in there. So you can see that experience in not just working in South Carolina, BWP isn't the largest search firm, but we do have a footprint across the country. And sometimes you will have people that did work here that might still be interested on this. So that all contributes with some of the relationships we have to really get into something beyond just the references people have. Everybody writes good references. And we gotta know a little bit more than that so we don't have any surprises. There are four parts to a superintendent's search, and I'll go through them briefly. But I'm gonna spend more time on the first part of specifications and talking about community engagement. So as we go through this, we've already got the calendar worked out. You've approved it, it's all set, we're gonna backward map. We're gonna do the job in May, you're gonna be able to appoint somebody. And we'll talk about this, I think it's May 22nd. Fact that we have to have communication. The fact that we want to talk about confidentiality. This is a confidential search. If anyone comes to a board member and wants to talk to them about the process, wants to be an applicant, you should say, I cannot talk to you. Talk to BWP, apply. In order not to put yourself where you would have to refuse yourself, which you don't want to do. When we talk about a confidential search, when people put their name out there, we unfortunately had a situation in Charleston. Some board member put two of the applicants on Facebook and they withdrew. And now, we talked about that. We signed a confidentiality agreement. And sad to say, that impacted the search to some degree. It impacted the confidence in the public. That is a rare exception, but you can't deny that. Now, the thing about South Carolina, you have the ability, as you go through the process, to get input from the public because they will see the three candidates that you will move forward for a day in the district. Probably over 90% of the searches are totally confidential, where the public does not see the candidates. Only the person they pick. You have a hybrid model that seems to, I think, be embraced more by your public. And it has some positive things to it. So it's a choice issue. So you have a process in South Carolina, we're gonna do it. But the confidentiality along the way, we just have to ask you to honor some of that as we do it.
Can I ask a question now? Just to confirm, the three final candidates that then receive an opportunity to do a day in the district, which are made public, is it three, more than three, less than three, or is it exactly three?
Three.
Is exactly, in the law or in the legislation, it is three?
You see, if we don't follow your law...
I just wasn't...
Then all of a sudden, if you say you want to put one, then we have to expose every applicant. And so we can tell people that you can make a choice if you become one of the finalists and your name is gonna be protected. And that actually helps us. I mean, we don't have as many candidates in South Carolina as I might have in Virginia for a comparable system because of confidentiality. But also, I think there's a confidence by the fact that we've worked in South Carolina and we know how we can at least address the issue and protect the middle ground, so to speak, what we're doing. So we need to explain that. And the most important thing is this community engagement. You know, we've had interviews with board members and I'm glad we were able to do that. And then we need to have you as board members and staff have representative groups we'll be meeting with. Actually, we've added a third day. I had a, normally, we were gonna do this at the beginning of the week, but we wanted to make sure we hit your board meeting. And then at the same time, while we had that day, I asked, I told staff I was available and they took advantage of it. And actually, the opportunity tomorrow to have a tour of your district, I'm looking forward to it. So these groups that you have, balanced by the fact that there's a survey out there. And the survey started on the 14th. I'm happy to say you already have 1,000 people that have participated. And I expect that to double before this is over. The other thing is, my email address, that's the end of the survey, and I already have over a dozen emails. And when people that choose to make the emails, they really usually want to get into something a little bit more than thanks for the survey. And that helps us also give an understanding. But it also creates access that you want to say, everybody has a chance to get involved. They don't attend the meeting, they can do the survey, they can do the email. And that's the way you would like to have it. You want to be inclusive as much as you can. We're pleased with the survey so far. One of the things we need to work on is try to get as many students as we can. So we will compare what the students say in addition to what the people say. And sometimes there's some stories to be told, some places more than others. In one case, it came out that safety was a lot bigger issue than people realized from the student standpoint. And you want to listen to that. And as the point of the survey, we're gonna have a leadership profile. So when we go through what we're gonna be doing with community engagement, one of the things we're trying to do is build maximum support. We're asking three questions. And we're gonna stick to the three questions. If someone comes in the meeting and say, we want to talk about the calendar. No, we're here for the superintendent's search. And we're gonna ask, what are the strengths of your district? What are the challenges you're facing? And what are the qualities and characteristics you'd like to see in your next superintendent? And we stick to that. And we do it in a respectful way. And I know you've got some issues in here, and we just think there's a better place to address them, coming to board meetings and other areas. But it's our time when we're doing the search. And I hope we're gonna have a good turnout. And even to the point, and I don't know if we're doing it online too or not. I don't know if staff is, I'll pick that up. Whatever your normal protocols are, that's what we should be doing. And again, I will tell you, I very much appreciated the support from staff in putting this together, Lippi, with your help and a lot of the other people. Now, recruitment, we already have people who've applied. I need to get that announcement tomorrow so I can get it out, so I can get my... Because we can't put an announcement out without it being approved by the board. Staff will come up with it, you need to sign off on it, just like you did with the survey. But I need to get that to get the window of advertisement, because this is a little shorter. I want you to get your money's worth. Because I've recommended that we did a 30-day. I don't think, we don't have time to do a 60-day. So we need to work that. And then we also have it on our own site. And our, the head of our, the managing director, Deb Hill, she was at the national convention. She had your name out there because we were, we had already signed the letter of agreement. And so she talked to some people. And again, you got a lot of things going for you on that. And then we have a lot of, we do not have a stable. We just don't do that. Each district, each search is gonna be a little bit different. And it's gonna attract perhaps candidates with different skillsets, which will show up on the profile. Then you get into the assessment of candidates. And we have to do a lot of work behind the scenes. Although, any superintendent is gonna be very visible. You can't hide, in this day and age, the visibility, it's greater. Social media is out there. There's chances for missteps, sometimes there's false information. We have a lady, her name is Mary Ann Blaskowitz, who also worked in Kershaw for Frank. And she is an expert. And she knows how to get behind the scenes. And then for your finalist candidates, we recommend a comprehensive background check where we have an agency. You might have your own agency. The group I work with is former military. And they can get into bankruptcy, traffic tickets. One candidate in Richmond had 15 traffic tickets over a year, all speeding. And that didn't go over so well.
I don't have that.
But it was public record. And so the issue is not to have surprises. So it goes beyond what we can also do just ourselves, but we need to have an outside agency that can get into everything. And that's important. So that digital footprint is now as much personal as it is someone is just on the job. Now, if someone is not a superintendent, they're not gonna have as many of the articles and things. But the fact, how do they connect if they're student learning, what was their role? So it isn't somebody that, a school system doesn't run just by a superintendent. Superintendent is part of the team, which includes the board. And so it's a we thing, it's not an I thing. And those people that get into the I thing aren't the candidates I think we'll be bringing forth. They just, they aren't gonna have that type of style. So we look through the applications, we get into the resumes, we get into, we also will do Google study. And of the candidates we present to you, we will show you a summary of the Googles. You will see that. And we'll talk about that in just a minute. Selection of candidates, we actually will give you board training. Takes about an hour and a half. There are some do's and don'ts about board training. A lot of it's common sense. You don't want to say, well, how old are you? You don't want to say, what religion are you? And certain things that came out. In DeKalb, some board members said some things. They changed their vote. And a candidate went away with $600,000. Because they violated some of the protocols. Not smart. I'm just telling you, you have to at least know those things. But we also try to do, giving you sample questions related to your leadership profile for you to pick and choose, because we're not there when you do the interviews. And also, give you a couple suggestions of how you work towards building consensus. You don't start with your best candidate. You start with which one is least desirable, and then you narrow it down. The other thing I'm gonna just tell you, a reality is, sometimes between the first interview where you think you know, you think you know where you are standing, the second interview can change you. South Carolina, by having someone that's gonna be standing in the public, standing and delivering, in which usually you're gonna have a board member participate in doing that, even taking people around and doing that, you might look at it a little differently. So you need to just wait till everything is over. And you don't, actually, we advise the board, don't talk about how you feel about candidates until you get done. There's always a tendency that that could happen. Can't change that. We don't recommend it in the sense that wait till you work and do a deliberate process on that. We can help you with some rubrics where you can do this. So you probably, I don't know how many, if the board gets involved in some of these things with other, process of hiring somebody. But in any event, for some of you, we know that you might have had some experience, but at least we want to have everybody hear the same thing. When we do present, you're gonna have to make a decision, Madam Chair. We can give you a notebook, or we could have this all online where we can have a Dropbox. We see people making different choices, we can go either way. The question is, you have access, but if you do do notebooks, they don't go out of the room. They don't go home. Now, if we do it by the other way, people say they can screenshot. I'm not worried about that. I think the integrity of this process and how you model it each and every day as board members is what you want to continue throughout. So it's just a matter, you have a process, you want to follow it. If there's issues, we'll try to work with them. Now, the timeline here, while it is an abbreviated search, it's not gonna affect the quality. You see where we are here in March. And the other thing that's happening here, and I want to make this point to the public, we're coming in here and we're gonna present a report publicly. I think, when is it?
April 1st.
April 1st. We'll be back April 1st. There's gonna be a report, and we take notes. We can do the best we can to get as verbatim. But the words that you're gonna see in a report in any of the interviews, and we'll probably end up talking to 150, 200 people, it'll be their words, not ours. And then we're also, while that's qualitative, and then we're also gonna have the survey information. And we will be able to get a recommended leadership profile, which you need to then decide if it represents you. We would suspect you might make some changes in it, that's fine. But we will use that to vet the candidates. We will actually advise candidates, you need to show how you meet the leadership profile and what body of work you have that has evidence that you can do these things. And it's ambitious, but you're looking for the best. And we like to find people that we would recommend to you that at least meet 80%. It's hard to meet 100%. You know, we like them to climb tall buildings. But you have high standards here. We understand that. Public has those standards. And so as we go through this calendar, we've already got that done. And the whole idea, what we have to do is we're working for a match and fit. You can see my email address on there. If somebody maybe wants to not do the survey, email me. If someone comes to you, send them to us. Tomorrow night, when you have the forum, if a board member wants to attend, no problem. As far as the stakeholder meetings, we do not advise it. We'd like to have the freedom of people because it just might chill it. I'm not saying it would, but, and I can't stop people from doing things. That's just my, our advice. You're gonna have Frank Morgan here on Thursday, we got Percy coming back on Friday. So the whole team will be here as we go through this. This concludes my comments, it provides an overview. I know some board members that we've talked to before. If you think there's something that they'd like to add or any questions you might have.
Let's go.
I would say, I think we're glad that you guys agreed to our expedited timeline. I know you guys have been working... I know you guys have been working on it already with a lot of support from Donna and others. And so we are, we stand ready to help in any way that we can to make sure that you can get through the process. So like, for example, we'll make sure that you get the announcement out, you know, in due time. We'll take care of that quickly. Anything else you need, don't hesitate to ask so that we can make sure we run right along the timeline.
First off, you make our job easier. You've got a great district. Perfect size. I happen to be biased on that. That's the size of Almar. But it's big enough that you can still work directly with your principals, but not too big that you lose some of that attention. It's your location, it's the fact that you're growing. If you go to Pittsburgh, they went from a hundred thousand kids to thirty thousand kids and they didn't close the school. Whole different set of issues here. In a growth mindset, it's challenging. It's challenging to get funding. But it's the location you have and all that's working towards you, and it's a great career move for people. So all the groundwork here should make this a very competitive search. The people we've talked to, we know that they know it too. And we just have to get it out there and work together on it. So thank you for your comments. Again, I appreciate being at your board meeting today. I do like, I just like what I saw.
I would just like to add, I mean, just want to give a shout out to our committee, Mr. Bodie, Ms. Pratt, and Dr. Frateroli here. I mean, just based on what we've seen, this is, I could say clearly, we made the best, we made the best decision.
Well, thank you. They did a good job in the interview. Glad we're here. Thank you, and I'll see some of you tomorrow, then later on, next day or two. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, let's see. We've got a hand, just a couple of action items. The first one, okay, Jenny's going to do it. That's what, I wasn't sure who. All right.
Good evening. Tonight, you've got the approval of the 2024 Hall of Fame inductees. I'll just go through the names briefly. I know you've already heard their biographies. Doug Chapman, Ira Bell Love, Margaret Lundey, Keebler Mills Jr., and Cherry Young. If y'all have any questions, I'm glad to answer.
It's a total of five, correct?
Total of five. Reception induction is on April eighth.
Say the game, say the date again.
Reception and induction will be on the eighth of April.
Same reason.
Any questions?
Yeah. No, 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 no.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the committee for the five appointees to the Fort Mill School District Hall of Fame.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the five recommended candidates for the Fort Mill.
School District Hall of Fame.
Hall of Fame. Make sure you get the title right. Any further discussion? I think you've got a great slate.
Thanks so much.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. All right, and then we've got some financial stuff to do.
Of course, of course. Good evening. So tonight, as is our customary practice, I'm bringing you bond resolutions for calendar year 2025. Just to remind you, you did approve in November a bond issue for twenty-two point four million for the three high school projects. We haven't issued that debt yet. I push it out as far as I can for interest savings to the taxpayers. So we will be issuing that in conjunction with one of these two issues this summer. But you did approve that one. That'll be a 2025 bond issue. Also, I like to bring all of them, but we have a unique situation with the new energy savings program. We'll be issuing special obligation bonds instead of our customary general obligation bonds. So it requires a little more legal work. They actually, as Theo asked me to share with you, it works backwards from what you're used to. They will do all the preliminary work upfront, and all the documents will be signed. And right before we're ready to go to the bond market is when I will bring you the resolution for approval. Just due to the difference in the legal aspect of a special obligation bond. But they are, Theo, working with Mike Gallagher, they are working together to determine, we have to have an underwriter, we have to have an underwriters' counsel, and we have to have a trustee counsel. And those three have to work together with all the legal documents. So I just wanted to make you aware of that, because I know you're used to approving all of them at this meeting. So we'll have one more to approve. But tonight, I'm bringing you two bond issues. The first is a resolution not to exceed four million four hundred fifty thousand. This is for our eight percent maintenance transportation bond issue. You have a list of the projects that Mr. Ramanick sent out for your review, and I believe you have, some of you have already asked questions related to some of those projects. But that will be, the total projects are four million three hundred thousand, and then we have a small amount of bond issuance cost. So that's why the amount will be four million four hundred fifty thousand. We will issue that, our plan is to issue that around April sixteenth. We will go to the bond market, and that will close at the beginning of May.
And what's the payback on that term?
That will be approximately three to five years.
Ms. Lordo, would you share with the public, what, why is this important?
It is critical, because we have a lot of these capital projects that they are too high in cost. They cannot fit within the school budget, where we allocate our schools a hundred dollars per student for what I call their school budgets, for the, just the normal type things that cost incurred during the school year. These things are, cannot fit in that. The schools could not afford to pull that out of that budget. And these things, a lot of these items, we have to go ahead and want to do annually instead of waiting for a future bond referendum. So these are kind of the middle projects between the school budgets and a future bond referendum. And we think it is critically important to keep up our schools. We have a huge asset investment, a huge investment in our school properties. And we think it is very important to keep up with these needs annually and not get behind. I can tell you, the number far exceeds this four million dollars. And Mr. Ramanick works very closely with the principals. We do a lot of negotiation on what the highest priorities, because we're trying to fit this within our building program plan as far as debt millage. And not exceed what we told our community when we had our 2024 referendum. And that's kind of what we're working within that framework of, we do not want to exceed a certain amount of debt service millage.
Yeah, we've got a significantly higher borrowing limit.
Correct.
We don't want to take that on.
Correct. So we work hard to get this, the list that we have put before you has been somewhat whittled down from the tenure facility needs study, and based on the highest priorities.
If you, Mr. Ramanick, would, give the public a biggie or two. What, an example of a category?
I was going to ask a couple of questions, so I can use some real examples that were on here, because, and I apologize, I should have asked these before, but I didn't, sorry. Because there were only two that caught my eye. A lot of them are individually smaller, but I wanted to, so there's some buses, right? And so the fact that we're having to buy our own buses, can you talk about that for a second? That's one.
Sure. So I can speak to buses. Or grades here, you can speak to buses, but with, right now, the kind of dilemma with buses is there is about a year and a half to sometimes two years between when we actually issue a purchase order and when we take delivery of that bus. And so we truly have to plan ahead on what the needs are going to be with the growing community. And on this list, we also have a few buses that we're already planning for when we open the four-year-old facility. Because we have to go ahead and do the ordering now to have those buses being built and take delivery before we need those additional routes.
Because those all have to have car seats and things, right?
Correct, correct.
I missed that part.
Yes.
And to your point, for the public, that's about a year and a half between all the buses together.
And we've learned, it is less expensive to go ahead and order them for four-year-olds versus having to go back and put those
retrofit.
Seats in later.
Yeah. And then another one that is sort of a different, you know, because some of these, to your point, there's some HVAC things and refurnishing gym, refinishing gym floors and stuff like that. But another big one, and I just want to make sure I understand where it is, the five hundred thousand that's for offices, stairs, et cetera, which bill, I don't know what the letters are.
We call it Building D right now.
Okay, that's the new one.
And the plan on that, as we continue to discuss what would be the best use of all of that facility and having that space, we decided that we wanted to go ahead and outfit that with a full training and support center that is going to be designed just like the one we have now in the building next door. Because you can hardly get reservation space for events and meetings in that facility. And so we have seen there's just a great need to have another space of that size. And so that is going towards actually putting in a full training center in that facility. Building it out. Yes.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, the rest of them are things that we're used to seeing. We've got new windows periodically, we've got new playground equipment, you know, things like that, that happen on a regular refresh kind of a basis, but those were some that jumped out at me. Any questions for Ms. Lordo?
Nope.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution to provide for the issuance and sale of not exceeding four million four hundred fifty thousand dollars general obligation bonds of Fort Mill School District, number four, of York County, South Carolina, in one or more series to provide for the issuance of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds provided hereby to prescribe the purposes for which the proceeds of such obligations shall be expended to provide for the payment thereof and other matters relating to.
Second.
Motion is second to approve not to exceed four point four five million in bonds as described by Ms. Branning. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you. And the next bond issue is for an amount not exceeding six million dollars. This is for our annual payments on the IPRB, the installment purchase revenue bond. And also, the equipment acquisition payment, we actually, this will be our last equipment acquisition payment that we entered into an agreement with Bank of America Capital Corp. We did three major HVAC projects a couple of years ago. So we have one remaining payment that's four hundred ninety-nine thousand that'll come due next December first. But the IPRB, we have to issue this annually. This was the bond issue that built Pleasant Knoll Elementary and Sugar Creek Elementary School. So we have to issue this annually. It is about five point four million dollars. So that makes up this six million dollars, and we have to issue this separately from the other issues because of the legal nature of that being an IPRB payment. And that will be issued around August. And we will add to that issue, the twenty-two point four million for the three high school projects. But once again, I'm pushing it out as far as I can for interest, interest savings.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution to provide for the issuance and sale of not exceeding six million dollars general obligation bonds of Fort Mill School District, number four, of York County, South Carolina, in one or more series to prescribe the purposes for which the proceeds of such obligations shall be expended to provide for the payment thereof and other matters relating thereto.
Second.
Motion is second to issue bonds not to exceed six million dollars as described by Ms. Branning. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Okay, thank.
And I do believe that that was our last official agenda item, and we are now in need of an executive session to discuss legal issues, contractual issues, and personnel recommendations.
Motion to go into executive session.